Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council meeting of August 17th, 2015. We'll start off by going to Charlene for the roll call and determination quorum.
Laurenti.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
We have quorum.
And now on to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. For the invocation tonight, we have Quincy Afraid of Lightning from the Miracle Center in Rapid City, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And folks, you are welcome to participate in the invocation, but not required to.
Let's pray. Father, in Jesus' name. Father, we thank you that you are here. And Jesus, you are made unto us wisdom. Pour out your wisdom in here tonight. Let everything be done with reason, holy reasoning. When we agree, let it be because, let it be because we are for each other. And when we disagree, let it be because we are for each other. And Father, we thank you for leading and guiding this session from beginning to end. And bless every one of these civil servants for their service to you, to our city, and bless their loved ones. In Jesus' name.
Thank you, everyone. Now we're on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Motion by Amanda and a second by Chad Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, and now we are on to awards and recognitions. Thought we were gonna have a moment of silence there. Can I have Maxine Boone come up here, please?
Maxine Boone of Rapid City is being honored tonight as the August Citizen of the Month. Born in Cottonwood, South Dakota, and raised in Waida, a small town no longer in existence near Wombly and Kadoka. Maxine married and had one daughter. In the 1960s, she was an active supporter of the NAACP when so much was happening with civil rights, and she indicates she's always been concerned about the good treatment of others. She traveled to Germany with a military husband, and they adopted a son, who is in turn has adopted three children of his own. After Germany, Maxine returned to South Dakota working in Sturgis as a bookkeeper for oil petroleum company. She would move to Rapid City with the company and would go on to work for the Nemo Job Corps Center and the South Dakota Game, Fish and Parks Department. She moved to Minneapolis where she worked for the Social Security Administration in 1970s. She also volunteered there for Volunteers of America and with DARTS, a volunteer organization transporting senior citizens and then individuals with disabilities to doctor's appointments and assist with errands and other necessary trips. In 2007, at the young age of 79, and that's in 2007, Maxine again moved back to Rapid City where she immediately looked for another worthy cause to volunteer her time and efforts. She found it, Meals on Wheels. And it was, it was a, she felt it was a great program helping deliver meals for older people. Now at age 87, and you wouldn't know that by looking at her, Maxine, and you wouldn't know that by riding with her either, by the way. Maxine continues to serve the Meals program and delivers two routes every week. She is also willing to help train new volunteers, drives, and enjoys taking city officials out on her route. I don't know why she enjoys that, but... In addition, she checks on the health and welfare of homebound seniors and was recently featured in Rapid City Journal and rewarded with a tank of thanks for her service. She has been credited with saving the lives of few seniors by calling 911 or a family member after noticing medical issues with some of the residents she visits. In addition to her official volunteer work, Maxine visits families and friends in local nursing homes and hospitals. She shares she's grateful for her good health and wants to, wants to what she can do for others. To keep herself healthy, Maxine finds 30 minutes every morning to work out on her treadmill and does a series of stretches to lessen any aches and pains.
My family's baby.
Maxine's principle in life is to be grateful for whatever capabilities you have and to accept what compromise that come with getting older. We are appreciative of the volunteer service Maxine has done for the Meals on Wheels program the past seven years and wish her many more years of service. Maxine, thank you for what you do in our community and the homebound seniors of our, of our community. Keep up the great work.
Here, here.
Now if we all go home right now, we'll have a perfect night. Next, we have our Veteran of the Month. So can I have Ronald Root come up, please? Ronald Eugene Root grew up with his parents, Arlene and Donald Root, and had the opportunity to travel around the world to many countries as his father was a career Air Force man. He went to many different schools in many different countries, then ultimately graduated from Albany, Georgia. Ronald followed in his father's footsteps and joined the Air Force in 1966. While in the Air Force, Tech Sergeant Root traveled to many countries. Though he never spent time in country, Root was a part of the Vietnam effort and instrumental in repairing and inspecting aircraft that were needed in Vietnam. Root's schooling and the service consisted of management custodian, equipment repairman, computer and switching system specialist, NCO leadership, human communication, and general purpose in repairing vehicles and maintaining jet aircrafts. Root served 20 years and has earned the following military decorations. Air Force Outstanding Unit Award with two oak leaf clusters. Air Force Good Conduct Medal with four oak leaf clusters. National Defense Service Medal. Armed Service Expeditionary, Expeditionary Medal. Air Force Overseas Short Tour Ribbon. Air Force Overseas Long Tour Ribbon. Air Force Longevity Service Award Ribbon with four oak leaf clusters. NCO Professional Military Education Graduation Ribbon with oak leaf clusters and Air Force Training Ribbon, all in 20 years?
I was busy.
You were busy. Good, good job. When discussing his service, Root is very humble and goes by the motto, "No glory, just faithful service." Root has been a personal trainer as well as a poet, of which three of his poems have been published in the international Who's Who in Poetry. His poems reflect a spirit of patriotism. Although Root is retired, he continues to serve and is very active in the American Legion Riders and the Patriot Guard. He is a life member of the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Disabled American Veterans, Disabled American Veterans Auxiliary, Vietnam Veterans of America, and TRIA. He also is a volunteer for No Veteran Dies Alone at Fort Meade Veterans Hospital in Sturgis. Root has helped escort the traveling Vietnam wall from Shadrin, Nebraska to Hot Springs for two years. In addition, he has helped set up the Remembrance Field during the Sturgis rally set up by the Patriot Guards at the Buffalo Chip where visitors can sign the banners on the flag of the state for someone they have lost or someone they know that was killed in action. Four years ago, ironically, at a Veterans Day parade here in Rapid City, he met and later married Marcella Ann. In their union, they brought together five sons and 10 grandchildren, including two adopted girls and a boy from a previous marriage. With these adoptive children, they have had an additional 10 more grandchildren. They enjoy living in the Black Hills and having family visit, which makes for a very busy household. In his spare time, which I'm guessing there isn't much of, Ronald likes to ride his Harley-Davidson trike around the hills and feels it an honor to escort deceased veterans to their final resting place. Root served our country with dedication and sacrifice and continues to serve our veterans, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you for your service.
As it said in my narrative, "No glory, just faithful service." And I believe that 100%. Thank you.
Now we have the Yard of the Month.
My name is Kathy Robeson. I'm a member of the Beautification Committee. Every month, May through October, we have a Yard of the Month. And this award is given to a member of the, of the community who has improved their, not only improved their yard because they want to, they've also improved their neighborhood. The Yard of the Month happens to be my sister. And I'm terrible at this. I don't cry for anybody else. I don't know why I'm crying for her. But Carol and Dick Mettler live on Chalkstone Street, on Chalkstone Drive, I'm sorry. And they have a lovely yard. They were also part of the, the Garden Walk this year. Talked her into it. And they receive a $25 gift certificate from Plant Smith that they was donated, the money was donated to purchase that gift certificate from Modern Woodman. They receive a sign for their window as well as a Yard of the Month award that has been signed by Jeff Beegler in the Parks and Rec and also the Mayor, Steve Allender. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we are going to take a few moments and go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2. And so we'll be taking a little break here, and we'll be back shortly. So we are in executive. Did you get that, Charlene? ...will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote. The council members, president, present. And there are no speaker request forms to go in this section. We do have some to go a little bit later in the agenda. So now on to number four. Under Mayor's Items, we have a presentation on the School of Mines by Dr. Heather Wilson. Dr. Wilson, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank you for inviting me to come tonight. I know Councilwoman Drew, you suggested it, and I very much appreciate the invitation to share with you what's going on at the, what's going on at the School of Mines. One of the things, I think sometimes, I, you know, I moved here two years ago and, and became the President of the School of Mines. And sometimes I think the people who are closest to it don't always realize just what a gem it is and how exceptional it is. It's a wonderful school. And, and it's wonderful for a couple of different reasons. Our academics are challenging. There are no easy degrees at the School of Mines. And as long as I'm there, there are gonna be no easy degrees at the School of Mines. These are the young people who will go on to be the professionals that build our bridges and clean our water and, and invent our medical devices, and we want them to be well-prepared. But it's also a school where there's personal attention for the students whenever they need it. And sadly, a lot of universities aren't that way anymore. But Mines is still small enough that we care about and get to know our students. It's also a great value in higher education. And one of the things that's changed about the School of Mines, probably over the last 15 years or so, is our internship program and the focus on professional development. 78% of our students have at least one paid internship before they graduate. And, and that's really unusual in higher education and really is one of the keys to success. Last March, we were on the front page of the Wall Street Journal, "The Best Value and the Best Return on Investment for a Public University Education in America." We're very proud of that. And that doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of the support of the, the people of South Dakota through their tax dollars and also by the support of philanthropy for the school so that we can keep the cost of education low. Internships and professional development are a big part of what we do, and it's driven really by the companies that hire our students. We ask them not only, you know, what do you want in an engineer, but what do you want in a prospective young professional? And, and we've been doing that for several years. And in 2013, we came up with a program to really focus on those traits, for career preparation, for understanding cultural and global diversity, for community involvement, for personal development, for leadership and teamwork, and the ability to communicate with others. And developed a professional development program which we call The Mines Advantage. In addition to that, internships are a big part of what we do. This summer, in fact, this week, our students are coming back from internships. And I saw one of our soccer players who admitted he didn't get as much running done this summer as he should have because he's been up in North Dakota on an internship. He was making $17 an hour. He was working 70 hours a week. So he got time and a half for overtime. They gave him a truck and a place to live and an allowance for food. So that money was putting in his pocket to be able to pay his tuition for this next year. So those paid internships are wonderful, and they lead to jobs after college. Our enrollment at the School of Mines has grown steadily. There was a conscious decision in 2008 to grow the school. And the reason is that the nation and the region need more engineers and scientists. There is a desperate shortage of engineers and scientists in the state of South Dakota and the region and the nation. And there's a continued demand and growth in demand for engineers and scientists. We're trying to do our part to, to meet that need. We don't expect this fall that we're going to have a significant climb enrollment. We actually have exceeded our plan for the last two years. And honestly, it would be probably good to just stay on the slope for a, for a year. Finding a Calc II teacher at short notice is a challenge. And we, we, we expect to continue to grow to about 3,000 undergraduates at a roughly about 5% per year growth. And, and that'll take us to about 2020. This is where our students are coming from. This was the map from the fall of 2014. 15 years ago, this map would, would have been heavily concentrated in the state of South Dakota. It's now more of a regional and even a national school. We also have 154 international students. Surprisingly, about 65 of them come for undergraduate education, not just graduate school. And, and so it's becoming a school of regional and national reputation. From an economic development point of view, what we're doing is attracting young students of promise, and we have a good chance of keeping them in the state, in the region, after graduation. after graduation. Because they came for the school and they stayed for the job and the lifestyle. There's a lot that's appealing about the Black Hills of South Dakota for our students. Twenty percent of the out-of-state students that come here, they pay for their education here with their parents' money earned somewhere else usually, they have their first zip code after graduation inside the state of South Dakota. As an economic development initiative, that's not a bad strategy for attracting and developing and retaining talent. This is what our students are studying, all engineers and scientists. We have, we have some minors that are, that are more along the kind of engineering management side of things, but the largest major is mechanical engineering, chemical and biological engineering is strong as is civil engineering. They're all strong programs, but in terms of size, those are the three largest ones. Larger programs in engineering than in, than in science, the fastest-growing program is actually applied biology, and it'll continue to grow this fall. Our doctoral students, ten years ago, we had about fifty doctoral students, we now have about a hundred. This will be the third year of our physics PhD, which is closely aligned with the Sanford Underground Research Facility in Lead, South Dakota. This'll be the second year for our civil engineering PhD, which we do jointly with South Dakota State University. But our, our real effort here is to have about a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty PhD students graduating, probably twenty PhDs a year, to really, really supply. Most of, most of our graduates actually go into industry rather than into academia, but into, into corporate research. We are now full members of the Rocky Mountain Athletic Conference, all of our teams except football have made that shift, so we've got a, that's the same conference that Black Hill State and Shadrin are in, as well as about five Denver schools, it's very Colorado-centric conference. The, the, this will be the last year that the football team plays in the Great Northern, but it's really allowed us to attract some exceptional scholar athletes to the school. You think about it, about ten percent of our student body are scholar athletes, and when I say scholar athletes, that's what I mean. Our average GPA for our athletes is higher than the student body as a whole. Of the roughly, I think it's seventy athletes that we recruited to come to the School of Mines as freshmen, come arriving this weekend, they started arriving, their average high school GPA is three point six. Twenty percent of them are four point oh high school students. So these are, this is, this is not a problem a lot of college presidents have, and I'm glad to say that I have it. I'd like to invite all of you to come to the one hundred and thirtieth Black Hills Brawl, it'll be for the home stake trophy. This is the longest-running NCAA Division Two rivalry in college football, and it's actually the third-longest rivalry in all of college football. Harvard-Yale is the longest, and Lehigh plays somebody, but we're number, we're the third-longest-running rivalry. It'll be a great game, it'll be a six PM game, so start tailgating at, at four thirty on a Saturday, so come, tailgate, kickoff at six o'clock, and, and it should be a wonderful game, wonderful event. We expect somewhere between five thousand and seven thousand people at that game, so it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun, and we'd love to have you join us. Two years ago, we started an energy resources initiative, we're equidistant from three of the largest energy plays in America, of course, the Bakken in North Dakota, the Powder River Basin in Wyoming, and the Denver Basin to the south of us. We, we now have a minor in petroleum systems, which allows students to focus either upstream on exploration and production or downstream on refining. We just, just this summer, the Board of Regents approved a graduate certificate, so graduate students can do a certificate in petroleum and petroleum systems. And we've raised one point four million dollars from private funds to hire the first professor for petroleum systems, and we're now doing the interviewing of the candidates for that professorship. We've got about forty students engaged, and we had our first petroleum field camp this last summer, which was full very shortly after we opened it up for enrollment. This fall, the Board just approved four new minors, one in environmental science, one in global engineering, which requires an international experience, and more and more of our students are looking for international experience. We now offer the minor for, for students who are enrolled in ROTC, and a, and a minor in computational statistics, which really is big data, which is more and more in demand for our, for our graduates. Research is growing, has grown the last two years, you know, it's a, this is all competitively earned research grants, both from the federal government, as well as state government and private industry. So our faculty do research and try to advance knowledge in addition to imparting knowledge to their students, which is one of the roles of a university. And, and another of our roles is to catalyze economic development. Until about five years ago, there wasn't a real focus at the School of Mines on filing patents and actually having intellectual property and, and trying to spin out licenses so that you become a catalyst for economic development. Some of that happened, but it was more by faculty who chose to go out and start companies rather than by, by actually consciously identifying and disclosing intellectual property. In the last two years, we've signed fifty corporate agreements, relationships with companies, some of them are disclosures, some of them are contracts for research, some of them licenses. Four of those are with Fortune 500 companies, seven of them are with small and medium-sized local businesses, so it's a real range of relationships. There have been twenty incubated companies in the Black Hills Business Development Center that have spun out into, into the community. The, the Business Development Center right now is full on campus, and there's actually a waiting list for the space in the incubator. And in the last three years, we've filed twenty-four patents, we've licensed seven technologies, and we've had two startup companies. In fact, one of the startup companies, VRC Metal Systems, was awarded the, the Startup of the Year for the Black Hills. I think in the past, and people have told me this, the, you know, South Dakota Mines had kind of a reputation for educating South Dakota kids and sending them out of the state, and, and we're now kind of the reverse of that, we're importing talent and trying to keep it here. But the school over the last fifteen to twenty years has made a concerted effort to tie in to local and state businesses. Of the, the companies that are, our students are doing internships with this summer, about two hundred and thirty companies they're doing internships with, of those, over seventy are South Dakota companies. Twenty-five South Dakota employers are in our top one hundred companies recruiting out of the School of Mines. We have a ninety-four million dollar annual budget of all different colors of money, capital and operating. We, that, that's about thirty-nine million that's paid in salaries and benefits, and four hundred and thirty-four employees, which makes us one of, not the largest employer in town, but one of the largest employers in Rapid City. There's a lot of construction that's been going on in the School of Mines, we were just laughing about it a little bit in the break. If anyone ever asks you, don't try to do sixty construction projects in a rainy summer. It's, it's been a, it's been a very wet summer on campus, and Darla knows that quite well. We, we have now just finished, and we will be, we will be doing the grand opening of our new wellness center in September, but it's now completely finished. This was initiated by the students, and then there were donors, including Steven Newlin and his family, who, who contributed about two million dollars to finish out the wellness center. So it's a great new facility for our students, largely for recreational purposes. This was not just for intercollegiate, or even primarily intercollegiate athletics, it's a wellness center for the students themselves. The next project that we will start either in late September or early October is chemistry and applied biological sciences. We have about seven thousand disused square feet of, of, of old lab space in the old chemistry building that will be, that will be fitted out for biology and some chemical engineering. Biology was added to the School of Mines as a bachelor's degree in applied biology three years ago now, and within five years, I think we will have the largest biology program, one of the largest, it, it will be one of the largest four or five programs at the school. I also think the best pre-med program in the state of South Dakota will very quickly become the School of Mines. It's an exceptional program and very demanding, and we already, even though we're only in the third year of it, last year, we put three students into medical school, so it's, it's a very strong program, and this facility will really fit out what we need for that robust program in pre-health professions and biomedical engineering. One of the things I wanted to talk a little about, I understand this, this block was, used to be really lovely. It was a, the construction there was started before I arrived, but this was a, you know, this council took a risk in, in your, some of you were here, some, it was your predecessors, in, in a tax increment finance system to be able to enable Rocker Square One and Rocker Square Two to be built. Those are completely full of students now, and, and those buildings are leased by the School of Mines for the next ten years. The Catholic community came together and built the Newman Center on that block, and, and so it really has helped to redevelop and make that neighborhood a lot safer for our students, because that was an issue. The next step is this, on September twelfth, we will be breaking ground on the next new dorm. It is being built by the foundation on foundation property in the next block down. So you can see in the background there, Rocker Square One and Two, so that's on East St. Joseph Street there. This is two hundred and two bed spaces, they'll break ground in September, and students will move in for the first time in August, so it'll be an eleven-month construction. There, the, the developer for it is out of Omaha, but it'll be, it'll be pre-cast concrete construction, much like Rocker One and Two. In fact, I think Gage Brothers out of Sioux Falls is doing this, is doing the concrete construction for us. But this will give us significant additional bed space for freshmen and sophomores and some juniors. We don't have any housing currently on campus for juniors or seniors, and this will give us the option of having some housing for juniors on campus, at least in the short term. Wanted to talk a little bit about student success, because this is our next initiative that you'll start to be seeing and hearing some things about. Our tutoring center, our mentoring and counseling and advising is spread all over campus in different pieces and places, and one of the things that's absolutely vital is transitioning students from high school to college and, and getting them the advising and the help that they need as they make that transition. Things are hard at the School of Mines, we expect our students to study hard, and a lot, the ones we worry about most are the ones who made it through high school with As and Bs and never had to crack a book. And then they realize in about week four of their first semester that it's not the same thing, and they need to learn how to manage their time and study. And so we will co-locate those things and try to help more students succeed. As a university, we choose to judge ourselves not by whom we exclude, but by whom we include in their success. I think it's a tragedy in American higher education that so many great universities tout the fact of how exclusive they are, and it's, it's not much of a challenge to bring in a, you know, an A-plus student and not screw them up for four years, and they're gonna go on to great lives. We judge ourselves by the success of our students, and we accept students who can succeed at Mines, but we try not to be too exclusive about it. We want students to have a chance, and then we will give them the personal attention they need to be able to succeed if they're willing to work hard. This'll be just the lower level of the addition to the Serbeck Center, which, which we desperately need. We have a campus of twenty-eight hundred students and three hundred seats in the cafeteria, so we're gonna have to expand that out, but the real reason for expanding Serbeck is on the upper level, which is where we'll put the Student Success Center. And we will staff that with counselors focused primarily on freshmen, but also on, on women in science and engineering, and we have a, a number of very good programs on, on counseling and mentorship to help students make that transition and get engaged in college. Something interesting about our scholarship students at the School of Mines, a student who gets a scholarship is likely to make it, ninety percent of them make it to their sophomore year. Even a, even a scholarship that's not, you know, that's, that, you know, you think, okay, it's, it's gonna cost a kid nine thousand dollars just in tuition to go to school this year, and if they have a thousand-dollar scholarship, ninety percent of those kids make it to their sophomore year. And it's seventy-seven percent for the student body as a whole, and that is true even if you control for their ACT and their GPA in high school. And you think, well, why is that so? Well, somebody took a risk on them, somebody made an investment in them, there's a certain loyalty that comes with a scholarship, and their parents are on the phone saying, don't you screw this up, right? In addition, in addition to that, a third of our students come from families making less than forty thousand dollars a year, so they don't come from money. And students do better if they have to work about fifteen hours a week outside of, outside of school, then it drops off really quickly. A student who has to work twenty hours or more a week is usually struggling in school, and so scholarship students really stick with it, and we will be focusing on scholarships for our students. That includes athletic scholars. The, the athletes graduate, we have higher retention among our athletes than we do of our student body as a whole. Janelle Scampi is the Armack Female Athlete of the Year, she is up to, you know, of all the conferences all nationwide, she is one of thirty students who are being considered to be the, the NCAA Athlete of the Year, Woman Athlete of the Year. She's a double major, or, that's not true, she was a, a double sport athlete, volleyball and basketball, chemical engineering major, I think she had a three point nine something GPA, did her master's degree in her fifth year, and just last week, started at the University of Washington Medical School, she's gonna be an MD. Brian Freed was our first NCAA All-American. One of the things we put emphasis on at the School of Mines is that we prepare leaders in engineering and science, and leaders serve the community. We don't wanna be just in this community, we wanna be of this community, and we wanna serve this community. Almost all of our student groups do some kind of community service. The Feeding South Dakota is one of our charities we work very closely with, but there are others, like Black Hills Works, where we've been doing projects with Black Hills Works for many years, and the, the Boy Scouts and Big Brothers Big Sisters, but our students did over eight thousand hours of community service last year. Our freshmen do a day of service on the Sunday afternoon after they arrive, that'll be this Sunday, from one-thirty to four. And last year, our freshmen did over eight hundred hours of community service before they took their first hour of class. This community has sacrificed in order to give them an opportunity for an education, and their obligation is to be grateful and to give back in service, and we want our students to understand that from the first day that they arrive at Mines. So how can we, the city and the school, make things even better? The relationship with the city is very good, I would say, there's a very close working relationship on everything from, from planning and zoning matters and rights of way to, to cooperative agreements on civil engineering, so that our students can participate in projects that the city needs. But I think there's opportunities going forward to make things even better. I wanted to, to tell you how much I appreciated the, the willingness of the city to take a look at the master plan and zoning all the way from downtown all the way to the School of Mines. There were some, you know, it took us almost two years to get a permit to put Einstein's Bagels into the ground floor of one of our dorms, because it's a restaurant, and as a restaurant, it needed parking, and the zoning rules are very, are very strict on that. So even though we had a thousand young people living within a block or living upstairs from Einstein's, it took us a long time to figure out all those rules and to get enough waivers to be able to put Einstein's Bagels in. I appreciate your willingness to consider looking at the zoning rules so that we can facilitate investment and renewal, not just right there at the School of Mines, but between downtown and the School of Mines. Because as we spin out companies and technologies, there are companies that wanna be close to the School of Mines, and if we can have them locate between downtown, there's a real opportunity here, it seems to me, for economic development and for a vibrant neighborhood between here and the School of Mines. We're gonna need a new incubator, and I gotta, I think the, the Economic Development Association, which, which runs the incubator on our campus, I think is starting to think about that. Where does that belong? Should that be on our campus, near our campus? What is the best place for the next incubator to keep spinning out companies from the School of Mines? Transportation between Mines and downtown is something of an issue. Well, I, we just had the, the enrollment and parent kind of briefing for a bunch of our scholar athletes that have, that arrived this weekend, and Dean Mann said, how many of your sons and daughters brought a car with them to college? Only about a third of them raised their hand. Now, the rest of them are gonna find friends fast who have cars, but it's very hard to get from the School of Mines to downtown, or even to a grocery store. The, the rapid-ride bus comes every seventy minutes, it stops at five o'clock, and it goes all the way up to North Rapid before it gets downtown. If there's a way to, and I honestly think that our employees would use it during the middle of the day, because nobody wants to give up their parking space at the School of Mines, if they could hop on a, on a rotator to be able to get downtown, have lunch, and reliably pick up that rotator and go back to downtown, back down to the School of Mines. If that's possible, we'd like to work with you on trying to make that happen. We want greater business and community engagement between Mines faculty and staff, and particularly Mines students. Our students benefit from engagement in the world, and, and that connection is important to us, and it's important to them. And we'd also like to see a heckuva lot more blue and gold on Hard Rocker days. This Thursday night, the This Thursday night, at Main Street Square, is going to be Hard Rocker Night at Main Street Square. It's also the day that our freshmen arrive with their parents from all over America to leave their sons and daughters in our care. And so on Thursday night, it's Hard Rocker Night, and there's a country band playing, and some of our students will be there, and I'm sure we'll be panning for gold and doing a few other things at Main Street Square, enjoying some food and some fellowship. I would love to see the community of Rapid City come down and welcome this next generation of young people and their parents, who will be coming back here and staying in hotel rooms and being part of this community, at least for the next four years. I'd really love to see Rapid City welcome the next generation of Hard Rockers, and for this to be more of a Hard Rocker town, and let's bridge that gap between one end of East St. Joseph's and the other. And then there's the conversation about the future of Rapid and who we will become. All of those logos are companies that spun out of the School of Mines or whose faculty started those companies. Everything from Phase Technologies, which I understand is moving back towards downtown, Respec, which is now a major corporation started by School of Mines faculty. Nanofiber Separations is a startup, and Rob Mudge at RPM and Associates. There's some great companies affiliated with the School of Mines, and even greater companies on their way. So what does this city look like 10 or 20 years from now? And is it possible to create more knowledge-based jobs by 2025? Could we create 1,000 new knowledge-based jobs, based on technologies that have spun out of the School of Mines, and the people who are then doing that, who then have other ideas and start other companies? So you create an environment where entrepreneurship and innovation and the starting of knowledge-based companies that create value and generate wealth are here in Rapid City. It's a great place to live and work and raise a family. And if we create that kind of a community, there's a lot of good things in the future for Rapid City, and it's a very exciting time to be in this city, because it has such a wonderful, bright future, where there's great jobs, great schools, great life, great city. And that, I think, is entirely possible if we work together. So thank you for your involvement, your support, occasionally for employing some of our students, occasionally for pulling them up by the back of the collar when they need it. I appreciate it very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of me.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge, and if we get a second, I'd like to keep the floor. Dr. Wilson, thank you. You're a very busy lady, and thank you for your time and this report. And I just want to say, I'm really excited, I mean, we are so lucky to have this school in Rapid City, and I think the School of Mines and Rapid City both have a bright future, and I'm excited about what we can do together with our heads. So thanks again for the report and being with us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no further comments, all in favor of acknowledging the report?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Now we're on to non-public hearing items, items 5 through 45. We'll open public comment on items 5 through 35, and there are no speaker request forms for those. We'll close public comment. Go on to the consent items, items 5 through 35. Does the council wish to remove any of these items? Seeing none, can I have a motion to, okay, a motion by Louis and a second by Scott? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That takes us on to non-consent items, items 36 through 45, and we'll open public comment on items 36 to 45, and have several speaker requests. First, we'll go to Jay Mendel on items 36 and 40.
I'm just here to answer the questions you have when you get them out of the room.
Okay, thank you. And then now we'll go to Jackie Gallego on item number 38.
Good evening to the council. My name is Jackie Gallego, and my husband and I own the Native Sun News, the weekly publication that has just won the Best of the Dakota Awards through not only the South Dakota Newspaper Association, but the North Dakota Newspaper Association. This was the first award that has been done with the mixture of these two great states. And I feel very proud that Dr. Wilson has been here this evening, longtime resident of New Mexico. She worked really hard for the state of South, or not South Dakota, but New Mexico. And we're very honored to have her, and she stole my speech. Like, what I wanted to say was how much I really do love Rapid City. This town has grown so much with the downtown area, and now more that I know about the School of Mines, but it's one of these that this market and this city has changed a lot, and it is growing, and it's growing for the positive. And one of the things I had wanted to come back and reiterate is that we still are looking to get the City Minutes into the publication. I know that we've been working with you on getting the advertising for job placements and things like that, and we appreciate that. So basically, what I'm here again is to just ask that the City Minutes be included into the budget. We're looking at about 16,000 guesstimate, not the 40,000 that was put in last year that was then taken out. So I look at, we probably are saving you guys about $25,000 by just using the 16,000, if we even go that far. This is basically what I'm just wanting to talk to the board for, so. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Jackie. We'll, there might be questions when we cover that item in the agenda.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And next, on item number 38, Ernestine Chasinghawk.
Good evening, council. I'm Ernestine Chasinghawk. I'm editor of Native Sun News. I just, I guess I have just some statistics here that I'd like to share. First, I'd like to make a note that according to the 2013 census, the Indian population in Rapid City is 12.4%. There is another 4.1% that identify as mixed race, which puts the number of Indians living in the city at approximately 10,000, of the 70,812 people living here within the city limits. That's not counting the transient people that move back and forth from the rez to the city on a regular basis. We don't really know what that count is. I'm from the Cheyenne River Indian Reservation, and according to the 2010 census statistics, there were 6,331 Indians living on my reservation. I am also the great-granddaughter of Sitting Bull, and I grew up part of my life on the Standing Rock Indian Reservation. According to the 2010 census statistics, there are about 6,435 Indians living on the Standing Rock Indian Reservation, where Obama visited last year. So my point is that there are more Indians living here in Rapid City than there are living on many of the surrounding reservations in this state, 10,000 Indians living here. Native Sun News has proven itself to be a viable news source to not only the Native population living in Rapid City, but also to those living in and around our sacred Chesapeake and the surrounding reservations. We have proven ourselves to be the voice of Indian people, and we interpret the news from our side of the color line. And sometimes, that's not so palatable to those who would rather not hear the truth as we view it. But it is a right that we hold strongly. It's a right of the freedom of the press, and it's guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States. So when one of our own came to us and shared his story, we listened, and we believed him. We had no reason not to. The owners of the paper, Tim and Jackie Gallego, warned me, Ernie, if you publish this story, Glenn Yellowrobe's story about then-mayoral candidate Steve Allender, and Allender gets into office, they said this to me: "He's going to cut us from the budget." And that's exactly what happened. He proposed a cut, to cut the City Minutes from Native Sun News from the 2016 budget. That's my reality. The reason we are asking for the City Minutes to be published in Native Sun News is to educate the 10,000 Indians living in Rapid City about the goings-on within their city government. And it's a process. And you're right, Alderman Lewis, most of them don't give a damn about what's in the City Minutes. But we're trying to teach them, and we're trying to get them involved. And that's been something that Tim Gallego has worked hard on for years and years, is to teach Indian people that this is your city too. You are also part of this community, and to help them to learn to get involved and to be part of the political process. And that's what we thought we were doing. But I guess, and according to poor Jackie here, and I feel bad for her, because she gets a tongue-lashing every time she talks to the finance officers about the finances and what happens with the City Minutes. But she has told me that we don't make a lot after the City Minutes are published. You have to factor in printing, you have to factor in distribution, and in the end, it really is an educational process for Indian people. So far this year, the city has paid Native Sun News approximately $3,500 for the Minutes and about $3,000 for human resources, and you can check on those exact amounts. So all total, for this year, we've been paid approximately $6,000. And, oh, it'll be the total for the year. So the total for the year will be about $6,000 for the City Minutes and about $6,000 for human resources. So that's about $12,000 in the end. So we're not talking about $40,000 here, but we're talking about educating our Indian community.
Excuse me, Ernestine.
Am I three minutes up?
Your three minutes are up.
Okay. So we're asking to be continued in the City Minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 40, Jeff Loggie.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Loggie. I'm Government Affairs Chairman for Black Hills Home Builders. I'm speaking tonight on item number 40. There's been some letters and things like that that have gone back and forth. Pretty much right after the July meeting, I had a phone call with Mr. Billings and basically discussed the item, because it had got continued. I said, "Do you have anything new on your direction?" Because we have nowhere new on our direction. He's for the sheet-rocking. We are against the sheet-rocking of the unfinished spaces from a cost standpoint. As far as other issues go, this issue came up because we do review the code at the Black Hills Home Builders. We're part of the process. When you approve the other portion of the code around that July first date, I believe, or even before that, there were several revisions in that code, some of which had cost, some of which had no cost. They were just clarifications and things like that. So we do look at the code, and if we do see glaring or items we feel that are going to add cost, we're going to bring them up. And that's why we did that here in that forum. We don't feel they should be traded off tit-for-tat with other codes that could be somewhere down the road. Is there other codes we can attack? I believe there is. I've made the first step on the electoral codes. Sounds like it could be a massive uphill battle at the state level to get these codes revised. And there is thousands of dollars' worth of cost in there that, we're going to take a jump at it, at least first step. We don't know if we'll have to do it legislatively or not. But I would like to see the sheet-rocking of unfinished spaces removed, and then move on and finish this code, so we can get on the 2015 code, which will be coming up right around the corner. We'll be talking about this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to item 45, we have Deborah Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor Allender and members of the city council. My name is Deborah Jensen. My husband and I own property and a business at 913 Mount Rushmore Road. I'm also president of the Mount Rushmore Road Group. The process to rebuild and revitalize Mount Rushmore Road began in 2005. Over the past 10 years, I think we've hit more potholes along the road to reconstruction than probably all of the potholes in Rapid City. You have a very short fact sheet in front of you. As I mentioned, over the past 10 years, the DOT has put the Mount Rushmore Road on their reconstruction list twice, and they've taken it off once. It was originally a two-phase project over two years. Because of the enormity of the work, engineers separated it into three distinct projects, each to be bid separately. Less than a year ago, it was determined that construction would skip over the middle section of the road and do the north next year, and then the middle section the following year in 2017. In January of 2014, bids for Project 1 came in too high. The DOT hired some analysts to find out why. Eventually, the project was rebid, but those bids came even higher. Thanks to Public Works Director Terry Walterstaff, some of you on the city council, including Councilman Wright and Nordstrom, then-Major Quaker, CVB Director Julie Jensen, and many others, who testified before the DOT in Pierre in July of 2014, the commissioners agreed: "Mount Rushmore Road is too important." Construction then began last fall. Three years ago, when the common council approved $5.1 million in vision funds, they could not foresee the rising costs of engineering changes, construction, labor, and delays. Now, we're at a very critical stage. The DOT needs to wrap up their negotiations with property owners in order to keep the bidding process on schedule. The DOT and the city asked for clarification and direction from the property owners regarding the boulevard areas. We were asked to agree on one concept. Last month, the Mount Rushmore Road Group unanimously approved Concept 3. Concept 3 is consistent with the corridor study and our downtown and the city center. We must keep this vision. What would our downtown look like if we had not put in the nodes 25 years ago? What would Main Street Square look like if a fountain were not there? We have just one shot to complete this project. Please keep the vision. You will see the rebirth. Property values will increase. Businesses will move in and generate sales taxes. Mount Rushmore Road will be re-energized, and it will live up to its name. It is the gateway to the Black Hills, and it is the invitation to our city. Please allocate the funds necessary to finish this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more speaker request from Lisa Modric.
Thank you, mayor and city council. I'm Lisa Modric. I am a citizen of Rapid City, also an officer of Mount Rushmore Road, and have been a part of the project now as far as the pre-vision for 10 years or longer. And Deborah Jensen speaks so eloquently, and she has been a fantastic president, driving this project forward, keeping businesses, business owners, and managers on-tac and on-track in order to keep them from pounding down on your doors, because the word "construction" usually means... Because the word "construction" usually means, "Let's fill up a room with City Council and maybe back a project back." This one being one of the most important and major projects in the state of South Dakota as stated by the DOT, as well as the Transportation Commission. And as before you now, is something that is at the critical point of completion. The pages that are in your report that you received, that was the study that was done in 2010, five years ago, is 107 pages, and it was so thoroughly and well-done and well-reported and given such a great vision that this is where we are now today. The ground is broken, we're six months in, and people can now start to see that we've got something beautiful happening. And maybe we are going to slow down that traffic. Maybe we are going to find a way to have business and commerce become one-on-one because we've calmed the traffic, we've made safe pedestrian zones, and we've allowed businesses to prosper and perhaps new businesses to come in. As Dr. Wilson had said, maybe some right here in our own back door are going to come and stay. We all speak of the passion that we have for our community, and that's why we come before you, each with all of our needs and wants and requests. And we're so fortunate that we have a community that is willing to put in a gazillion hours of volunteer time to try to keep something as important as the projects that we have before us on track. So where we're at today is Project One, ready to prepare for Project Two, and as Deborah stated, moving all the way down to Kansas City Street, creating a donut effect, and then Project Three. The demand of that on a business owner, a manager, property owner, is absolutely tremendous. It's tough enough to do a project in a year, but when you've got something that was extended out to three years and still keep the public under control, still meeting every month, and still looking for the positive side of the negative receipts that so many are seeing right now, says a lot for an organization. So I would hope that you would continue to respect the properties, owners, and their needs and requests in order to get this project done in a beautification form, in a safety form, in an aesthetic form, and put the dollars behind it. Because the dollars that you put into this major project is going to show for us for 30 years. And we are a showplace on Mount Rushmore Road, and we drive through Mount Rushmore Road. And what we want to do is drive to Mount Rushmore Road. We want to make it a place to come and stay and shop and play. So stay with us on this one, and let's get this job done together. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. That's all for the speaker request forms, so we'll close the public comment period on these items, and we'll go on to ordinances 36 through 40, and we'll have those read into the record by our Legal Finance Chair, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 36 is a second reading of Ordinance Number 6050, an ordinance to amend provisions in the International Residential Code to address compressible, shifting, and expansive soils by amending Chapter 15.13 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second. And a second by Mr. Laurenti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 37 is a first reading of Ordinance Number 6070, an ordinance to reclassify the Executive Assistant Program Coordinator within the mayor's office. So the position is no longer an officer of the city. By repealing Section 2.12.070 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, I make a motion to approve.
And a second by Darla Drew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number 38 is the first reading of an ordinance Number 6069, the Fiscal Year 2016 Appropriation Ordinance. I yield the floor.
Motion to approve by Lewis.
Second.
Second by Jerry Wright, and we'll go to Amanda Scott for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting no on this one, only because I do not believe, and Pauline Sumption is grinning at me, I do not believe in passing something that I know is not ready to be approved, and it will have major changes made to it. So just want it on record, this is the first reading, but I do not believe in passing first reading. I've seen too many times where people have told me, "That's okay. We'll continue it in City Council until it's right." And then, lo and behold, the vote goes through, and it never was vetted out. So I cannot vote on yes on this one, since I know it's going to have major changes. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call.
Lewis. Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. Laurenti. Wright. Wyffenbach. Doyle. Motion carries, six to four.
Okay, next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 39 is a first reading of an ordinance Number 6068. It's a supplemental appropriation Number Three for the 2015 fiscal year budget. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Steve Laurenti. All those in favor of the item? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 40 is a first reading of Ordinance Number 6049, an ordinance to amend provisions in the International Residential Code to address fire protection of floors by amending Section 15.13.280 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to deny.
Second by Chad Lewis, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to applaud the folks that were involved with this ordinance, putting it together in the length of time and the number of hours that you put forward on bringing this ordinance forward to have us take a look at it. I feel that this is an ordinance that is needed, so I'll be voting no on the denial, meaning I support the ordinance, because I think it's a step in the right direction that needs to be accomplished. And there's a couple of reasons why I need to share with the public why I support this, is because, number one, is that I feel it's a safety issue for the city firefighters that have to go into these areas. And I've explained that thoroughly already. The other part of it is that the planning, or excuse me, the Department of Equalization has talked to me about the number of sheet-rocks that have been installed versus getting torn out and replaced within a certain period of time. I'm getting conflicting information from the home builders, and it's not your folks' fault, it's just information that I'm getting. And so that's just a couple of reasons why I'm going to be voting no on the denial. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Jerry Wright.
I'll be voting no on the denial in the interest of the public safety of our firefighters and also the residents of the homes. Thank you.
Okay, seeing for, seeing no further discussion, just want to bring up that an affirmative vote on this motion will deny the ordinance, and a no vote will pass the ordinance. So all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. Laurenti. Wright. Wyffenbach. Doyle. Estes. Motion carries, seven-three.
Okay, on to number 41 from the Public Works Committee items. Can we have this read in by Charity Doyle, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 41 is to approve the 2016-2019 Rapid City Area Transportation Improvement Program final report, and I make a recommendation to approve the updated report.
Second by Amanda Scott. All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 42, we'll go back to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 42 is a request for SDCL 1-19A-11.1, the final determination relative to the proposed siting replacement affecting a residential historic property located at 703 Eleventh Street. And I believe the motion at Legal and Finance, and I would recommend that motion as well as to approve Option Number One with stipulations.
Second by Steve Laurenti. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now on to Community Planning and Development Department items. Number 43 is a request by Dream Design International for a preliminary subdivision plan for a property generally described as being located south of Katron Boulevard and east of Highway 16. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Can I have a motion? Amanda Scott makes a motion. Second by John Roberts. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 44 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Pat Toulustis for PLM Development LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at South Minnesota Street, west of Fifth Street and north of Enchanted Pines Drive. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Brad Estes. Second by John Roberts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Item passes. Going on down to staff items, number 45, Mount Rushmore Road Construction Vision Fund Expenditures and Landscaping Update, and we will go to Dale Teck, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief update, Deborah Jensen did a fine job of giving the background on the project. I guess I've got a little, a few more tidbits to add. She had mentioned that the corridor study, that was a joint effort between the City Rapid City Planning Department, City Rapid City Public Works Department, Department of Transportation, as well as other groups such as the Mount Rushmore Road Group, was approved in 2010. That's linked to the agenda, showing the general concept, if you will, of what the beautification and improvements along Mount Rushmore Road are in regards to landscaping, bearing of underground power, signage, et cetera. Originally, I believe, $2 million was approved for Phase One of the Mount Rushmore Road project, and subsequently, another $3.1 million was approved for those enhancements, bringing the total to about $5.1 million worth of vision funds approved by City Council for the project. I believe Lisa did a fine job of talking about the projects being bid. Phase One is currently under construction. That is from Floorman Street up to the bridge on Tower Road. I believe completion is slated for later this year. For the majority of the road work, some of the cleanup will carry into next year. Bidding of Phase Two will occur sometime this winter with construction starting next year. And Phase Two is actually from Kansas City Street to St. James Street. The reason the DOT switched the phasing is the drainage. They wanted to build the downstream drainage facilities first so that that last section will drain into the newly completed northernmost section, which will accept the storm water. And then the final phase, Phase Three, is from Floorman Street to St. James Street. Also attached to your packet was a letter that the DOT sent out in discussions with the Mount Rushmore Road Group, as well as individual property owners, talking about the enhancements that the Mount Rushmore Road Group unanimously approved, which was the Concept Three. I believe you have that in front of you, talking about having concrete medians as well as some street trees and some rain gardens. The DOT has, in a nutshell, in their letter stated that if the landowner currently has concrete, the DOT will replace it in kind. If the landowner does not have concrete in the Boulevard area, it'll be the property's owner's responsibility to pay for that. I believe the Mount Rushmore Road Group is requesting additional funding in an effort to get their vision or their Concept Three constructed with Phases Two and Three. I'll show you a funding sheet that was also attached to your agenda. I made a slight modification to it. Phase One items are listed, actually the first four items, landscaping, streetlights, power, and engineering. The engineering is for all three phases, and when it says engineering, that's for the enhancements. That's not for the utilities that go with the project. Those are funded under enterprise funds. The landscaping, streetlights, and power, those are the costs as we know them today. They will change slightly. We know that the power wasn't quite as expensive as Black Hills Power had indicated it would be. However, the street lighting, there's additional funding that isn't, was needed for that, that came in substantially more than the bids. It's about a wash. We believe those costs for Phase One are pretty close to true, pending any final change orders, and that will occur at the completion of the project. Phase Two, Phase Three are shown together there. Once again, this cost estimate was produced in late July of this year, so those are with the best data that we have available as far as what the costs are. So the remaining balance is about $298,000, give or take, which is about 6% of the total budget. In my opinion, that 6% is probably a contingency that should remain in place. We have no idea where Phase Two, Phase Three are going to come in. Everything you see below the line are estimates for the Concept Three that the Mount Rushmore Road Group has supported, about another $1.1 million worth of concrete and planting enhancements in the Boulevard area, as well as additional design effort for that. That's really all I have to report at this time. If you have any questions, I certainly stand for them. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go to Jerry Wright.
I'd like to make a motion and retain the floor afterwards, if I may, please.
Okay.
Make the motion that this subject be referred and discussed at the next Public Works meeting in detail.
Second.
And discuss.
By whom? John. John Roberts, a second.
Here's why I think we need to discuss it in greater detail. I was called late last week, or early, mid-last week, about this subject, and the concern of the West Boulevard, excuse me, Mount Rushmore Road Group, was they were hearing from the DOT that there was going to be grass seed sprayed on the ground or thrown on the ground, et cetera, et cetera. And they had met and come up with three concepts and recommended Concept Three, which was much more in line with the original plan that was put together. We need to sit down and get the actual costs we have to date and what's actually left and decide where we can go, and I think this is not enough information, not enough detailed information to make a decision tonight. So I think we need to discuss it and get some better accounting.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, you have a second on that motion? Am I correct? Good. I just wanted to state this, and hopefully that will come across at the Public Works meeting, but from looking at what we're talking about, a lot of grass boulevards and trees, where property owners want to deem that as necessary for their area of the improvement there, but I think we need to think about the long-term costs as well, and hopefully at Public Works, this can come up, is the use of zerscaping, where we're not using as much plant life, but it's still very attractive. I mean, they do it a lot, I believe it actually started down in Colorado, actually, this, the terminology, actually. But I think that's something we need to think about long-term, the costs of maintaining it and the whole shooting match there, and get some ideas on maybe firms that do zerscaping and that type of thing. So just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Okay, now to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a problem taking this to Public Works. I guess one of the things, I have a question for you, Dale, I guess it's, or I want to know if you agree with me, is I think that we need, a group needs to have a meeting with, probably with the state and their engineer to see where they're at as far as right-of-way in making deals with the landowners, because if they're a thirder, that, you know, as these projects get designed, I believe they, their landperson goes to each landowner and gets a construction easement and makes a deal on, you know, how they're going to leave their site, and if, it kind of depends upon how far they're through the process, and if they got to start over. I mean, I just, we can, we need to discuss this, but I'd really like to find out in as far as the design timeline and the states, where they're along in the process of dealing with the landowners on this. Does that make any sense, Dale?
It does, and I might be able to shed a little light on that. I know the department has... I know the department has started negotiations with some landowners, and in fact, I believe they've already had some easements signed. They would have to revisit some of those, and then pending any approval from, from the city on additional funding and additional enhancements adjacent to those properties, they would need to revisit each and every one or kind of start from scratch. I believe they indicated in their letter that they didn't think that would cause any major delays in the project, but certainly if there is something unforeseen, it could certainly delay bidding of the project.
Thank you. I just think that that's, that's a component that needs to happen for pub, for, we can take it to Public Works, but I think that's a, in addition to looking at the numbers, that's a component that has to happen so we can make an educated decision. Now, no, no, when you, on these Phase One numbers, on the landscaping, the streetlights, the power, and the engineering, I realize they're subject to change, Mr. Tech, based upon change orders, but are these, are these the best, are these numbers, are the streetlights reflecting the higher price, and is the power reflecting the savings that got shifted to streetlights?
No, we have not seen the final billing from Black Hills Power, so we don't know what the final number is. They've giving us, given us verbal direction that it's going to be less than what they estimated, however, I believe on a previous Public Works and Council agenda, there was a new agreement that was forwarded by the state for the additional costs in streetlights, and that was about two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in addition to what the three-hundred-and-twenty thousand shown here.
Okay.
So we believe it's going to be about a wash.
Okay.
Based on, on our conversations with Black Hills Power and the actual bid numbers received.
Okay, thank you. Then your estimates on Phase Two and Three for the streetlights and power, have they been adjusted based upon what you think Phase One is going to land at?
The, certainly the streetlights have. The power, once again, we're at the mercy, if you will, of Black Hills Power on, on that work. They haven't given us a final number because they have not contracted that work or put their own in-house estimates together on their personnel doing the work. When we get closer to them actually executing that work, we'll have a better number in hand for Black Hills Power.
Thank you. I just, you know, I, I agree with Alderman, right? It needs to go to Public Works. I think it needs to, this needs to get vetted more, but, but when, when we say we need to dial, drill down into better numbers, the only better numbers we might get is what the actual numbers are in Phase One. Phase Two and Three are still subject to the, to the challenges of the bidding environment right now, and, and right now, with those being adjusted, you know, there's, there's only a six percent contingency, so we, we can dial it in as, as good as we can, but it's still subject to whatever the bidding environment is. You know, I think Phase Two is set to go out for bid in January.
Sometime around the first of the year.
And then Phase Three would be a year later?
I assume that's the schedule the DOT would like.
Thank you. I appreciate, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the, the motion because I am going to support it. It needs to be taken a look at, a little bit deeper on this. And I also want to thank the Mount Rushmore Road Group keeping this in front of us. I think it's a worthwhile project to look at it, but again, I'm concerned about where we're going to come up with the money, and hopefully where the Public Works Committee is going to have that opportunity to take a look and see where that money is going to come, at least start taking a look and see where that money is going to come from, and I still have some concerns about that as well. And I, for my number-two item is that I'm concerned that, well, I'm, I'm not even concerned about so much the planting materials, because I believe we can go through the Beautification Committee and get fifteen thousand dollars of Sterns grant funding for our planting materials. I have to double-check with the Beautification Committee on that to make sure I'm saying that correctly, but I believe that opportunity is available. So in my opinion, the planting material itself is the least expensive of the entire project. What I'm concerned about is, my point number three, is the ongoing expenses once we acquire that. I believe that the city will take over approximately seventeen or eighteen, two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen. Am I saying that correctly, Dale? That the city will be taking possession of Mount Rushmore Road, no?
No, there's no road swap as far as Mount Rushmore Road is concerned. However, the, this, the city will be required to maintain all of the landscaping that was installed with the project.
Thank you for the clarification, because I've been misstating that, and so we will take responsibility of the median primarily in two thousand seventeen?
As each phase is completed and accepted by the DOT, the city will be responsible for the maintenance from that point forward. So it's not going to be a date for all three phases, it's going to be, as each individual phase is completed, the city will have, have to take responsibility for those improvements.
So at a minimum, at a minimum, what we're looking at is, and I'll look to Jeff Pigler for this, and he don't have to answer tonight, but I assume there's a major cost that's involved in that median expenses. So that's, that's the area that I'm looking at as a major concern for going down in two thousand seventeen and eighteen and on into the future. So if we can get some of those issues addressed during that conversation at, at Public Works Committee, I'd like to take a look at those numbers as well. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, now on to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mary, I, Mayor. I also am in support of sending this back to Public Works because I, I do believe that we need to start looking and planning for these changes now, even if they aren't going to take effect for a couple of years. Clarification point, Mr. Tech, when the City Parks and Rec Department takes over maintaining the improvements that go on to Mount Rushmore Road, is that just in the median, or is that also in the right-ofways outside the frontage of all the businesses?
If there are specific landscaping items that are irrigated or nodes or something to that effect, the DOT will not maintain those, obviously. So they will look to the city to sign a maintenance agreement on those. The city can do two things. The city can either undertake that maintenance themselves or turn around and pass a resolution requiring the adjacent property owners to do that maintenance. I believe on Omaha Street, the city undertakes that. They, they do all the maintenance in the medians, as well as, I believe, the nodes along the medians as well, or along the roadway as well.
Okay, thank you. That would be a nice point to bring up because I do think that the long-term maintenance costs need to be looked at. I have heard, just to, for clarification for the Public Works meeting on this topic as well, is there's been kicking around of coming back to the Vision Fund for more money to satisfy this project if it's needed, and I'd just like to caution everyone that if there's going to be any consideration from the Vision Fund, I do believe that it needs to go back through the vetting process of the next round of Vision Funds. Thank you, I'll yield the floor.
Our final speaker is Darla Drew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a question actually for Deborah Jensen.
Hello, Deborah.
Hello, Darla. I have to say, I do agree with you guys. If we, we get this started, and we've done this much, we should complete the project. I really, I do agree with that. The funding is going to be a problem. How do you feel about business fatigue? I mean, we're looking three years out, construction going on constantly, you know, right now the businesses are probably still in favor, but how, how is this going to really play out for the next two years?
Well, you and your husband, of course, are business peoples, and, and you've lived in Rapid City as long or longer than I have as well, and so you're familiar with all of the construction, you're also familiar with Mount Rushmore Road. And as you know, there, as you go up and down Mount Rushmore Road, even now, there are a lot of for-rent signs from property owners. They cannot rent their property when there's construction going on. As the Mount Rushmore Road Group, we're doing all we can, you know, to kind of be cheerleaders and, and to keep people upbeat, and as Lisa mentioned, I think that we're doing a pretty good job. We have, we've formed Cone Man, which we presented to you a number of months ago, and we've been working with the various media, like Rushmore Media, they have been great about helping us get the word out that the businesses are open. Every opportunity we get, we go downtown with Cone Man during Thursday nights, and, and we hand out cards and just information about Mount Rushmore Road. But the project, as you said, is now going to be longer than we anticipated, and so we have to keep the momentum going because we want those businesses that are here today, including our own, to be there three years, three and a half years down the road. It's going to be closer to twenty eighteen, and then you're looking at property values and sales taxes and, and things like that starting to increase, and we want to be able to bring businesses in. Fatigue is always something that you have to, that you have to deal with. I think we're doing a pretty good job, but it's definitely a concern. We do meet every month. The Mount Rushmore Road Group has met for the last ten years every single month but one, and we get great participation from the folks on Mount Rushmore Road. And thanks again also to you folks on the council, the Public Works Department, and Community Planning. I mean, the, the state has been, and the city have just been wonderful about coming to those meetings and also, you know, help, helping us get the word out and being very supportive, too.
Well, thank you for your time on this project, because I know it's not something that will benefit you personally, and you guys have put in, I would guess, hundreds of hours over ten years on this project. So, so thank you for your work. I'm, I'm not sure how far we'll get along with this, the funding for this new area that you want to see, the boulevards, but, you know, congratulations on your work, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you, Deborah.
Thanks, Darla.
Can I, okay. We're going to go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been reserved tonight, so you might have to give me a little leeway, but, and I appreciate the efforts that Mount Rushmore Road Group has put into the project, and I know that the Vision Fund, they voted to fund this item, but there's obviously a lot of, long ways to go according to our Public Works Director. We don't have any actual costs on any of the items yet, understanding that. But I had a question, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Dale Tech about the streetlights. What, we knew they'd come in higher, why'd they come in higher? Is it a bid process? Do, I mean?
The roadway lighting was part of the DOT bid project. Put the specifications out to bid, the DOT had an estimate as to what they would cost, the bids came in substantially higher. There's no other way to explain it than that. There's, there's no smoking gun as far as why they came in where they did, and that's just what the going rate is.
So we're going to get together and just hash out the items moving forward, I guess. But I guess I would caution the council, ask the council, as we move forward, that you have some specific items that you want to address, that you make sure that Dale's aware of, or whoever's aware of on the project, so we're not just throwing out a general statement. Thank you.
Now back to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Lisa and Deb. You guys made me, reminded me that I did want to make one other comment tonight, and that was, in listening to the meetings down for the Mount Rushmore Group, it was always the intention from the beginning, as a beautification project, to get rid of the ugly string of electrical cables above ground. And so I do want to emphasize that, because the funding source will be difficult, and I, but I do believe that we can always continue to enhance the beautification of Mount Rushmore Road going forward, and I do want to just remind everybody that the most important, at least in my opinion, the most important beautification is being taken care of, and that is cleaning up all those cables and getting the street to open up that skyway and have a beautiful avenue to go down. So I, I want to thank you, but I also wanted to remind everybody, once, so many times, once you get one problem done, then you start looking at other problems, and I think we need to celebrate that we are getting the beautification of that corridor, as intended from the beginning. So let's not lose sight of that, because I do appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and the motion on the floor, send it back to Public Works, correct? The next Public Works, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of doing so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Now on to public hearing items forty-six through fifty-three, and there are no speaker requests for them, so we'll open and close that public hearing. Brings us to consent, public hearing items forty-six through forty-nine. Would the council like to remove any of these? Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to remove number forty-nine, please.
Okay, any other items? Then can I have a motion to approve forty-six through forty-eight?
Salute.
Estes with the motion, Scott with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, on to forty-nine, which is Resolution Number two thousand fifteen dash zero-seven-six B, as in boy, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually need to remove number three, Kristen Mucheck Rooks, from the roll. She actually came in Friday late in the day and paid her assessment.
Okay, Richie Nordstrom moves approval with the exception of number three, and a second by John Roberts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, now to the non-consent public hearing items, items fifty through fifty-three, and let's go back to Legal Finance Chair Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifty is a second reading of Ordinance six-zero-five-two in Ordinance Amending Section seventeen point zero-six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the with-then-described property as requested by Dream Design International, Inc., for a rezoning from low-density residential District One to low-density residential District Two for property generally described as being located south of Catron Boulevard and east of U.S. Highway sixteen. I make a motion to approve.
Second on that by Brad Estes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Item passes.
Item number fifty-one, second reading, Ordinance number six-zero-six-seven in Ordinance Amending Section seventeen point zero-six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the with-then-described property is requested by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Kelly Lytle for a rezoning from medium-density residential district to high-density residential district for property generally described as being located at thirty-three-twelve Jackson Boulevard. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second by Steve Laurenti. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Item passes.
Item number fifty-two, second reading, Ordinance number six-zero-three-two in Ordinance to promote historic preservation by repealing Chapter two-point-six-eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code and adopting provisions in Chapters seventeen point zero-four and seventeen point five-four of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Item number fifty-three, second reading, Ordinance number six-zero-six-four in Ordinance to amend provisions concerning consolidation plaits and lot-line adjustment plaits by amending Section sixteen point zero-eight point one zero-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Jerry Wright. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. On to the bill list. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no changes to the bill list, so it's that which is attached at seven million three forty-one two ninety-seven fifty-one.
Motion to approve by Laurenti, second by Richie Nordstrom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, good work, everybody. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Laurenti, second by someone down here, Darla Drew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.